Superintendent, you want to get us going?
Sure. Just very briefly, good evening, everybody. Today, we begin with a workshop on our pre-K expansion efforts. As you know, this is the culmination of work that we've been engaged in for a better part of the past two years. In the fall of 2017, I asked the board to grant us the time to work with stakeholders across the system to determine how we achieve the promise of high-quality pre-kindergarten in Portland. Since that time, we've been working to the point that we are at today. Last spring, we brought you the results of the Data Innovation Project's evaluation of current program. This past fall, we brought you the results of the subsequent community engagement efforts coordinated through Starting Strong. And finally, just this fall, we articulated three pathways to achieving what we believe is needed pre-K expansion for four-year-olds in Portland. As you recall, this amounts to nine additional classrooms over the next five years and will make public pre-K available to all students from economically disadvantaged backgrounds while keeping our enrollment socio-economically diverse. During December and January, the Curriculum Committee, with the support of Malia Nali and the Starting Strong team of Matt Dubele and Tara Williams, reviewed those three pathways. They've recommended Pathway Two, which combines both district-level expansion with expansion by community partners through an RFP solicitation process as needed. Tonight's workshop will provide an overview into the three pathways that the Curriculum Committee went through and answer follow-up questions that have been posed by board members since that time. And so with that, I will turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Malia Nali to guide us through the workshop.
Just real quick, before we get started, Malia, I just want to clarify for some of the folks that are in the audience that today, we will not be getting public comment on the pre-K expansion. We'll be able to do that on our March 5 meeting, when it is actually the day that we're actually going to vote on this as a motion. I just wanted to make that, clarify that. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Is this picking up? Can you hear me?
It is.
Okay. So, as the superintendent just mentioned, our objectives for tonight during workshop are to review the context about how we got to where we are today. A lot of that's going to be repeat, but just to make sure you're re-grounded in all of that information. To review the specific recommendation that the Curriculum Committee is making about how we can expand over the next five years. And then to respond to questions, both to point you to some of the questions that we collected and responded to in the FAQ, as well as to take other questions that you have this evening. Before we review the options for expanding access to universal pre-K and discuss the recommendation put forth by the Curriculum Committee, I do want to recap where we've been and how we got to the recommendation that will be brought forward to the full board tonight. For those of you who attended the fourth pre-K workshop, this is a repeat of the comments I made there. Portland Public Pre-K Program was established in 2010 with a grant from the Cohen Foundation and was folded into the district budget in 2011. Between 2010 and 2016, the program has grown by one classroom per year with a mix of district-run classrooms staffed with PPS teachers and ed techs and community partner classrooms that are staffed primarily with their own teachers and staff. As of today, we run eight classrooms with an additional mixed pre-K class on peaks, serving a total of 124 students. When counting peaks, six classrooms are located in elementary schools, two are operated by preschool providers, Catherine Morrell Day Nursery School and Youth and Family Outreach, and ones operated through a partnership with the Opportunity Alliance Head Start Program. All of our current classrooms are high-quality and have met the quality standards at the point of inception and when evaluated by the state over the past years. Teachers in PPS classrooms and partner classrooms are credentialed, high-quality educators who are committed to our students and who collaborate around a common curriculum and assessment system. In 2016, when we paused the expansion of the pre-K program in order to better understand our community's needs, we did that so that we could have a clear understanding of our expansion goals, timeline, and strategy for getting there. At that time, we understood that the program was on track to expand by one classroom each year, but we were not clear about how many more classrooms were needed, where they were needed, whether or not we should expand with PPS classrooms, partner classrooms, or what mix of the two was intended, nor were we clear about how we would fund the expansion over time. Finally, and crucially, we recognized a recurring pattern in our enrollment, where we were able to fill our seats with non-economically disadvantaged students quickly and easily, but we struggled to retain students from economically disadvantaged backgrounds in the seats, which made us want to better understand why and what barriers may have been contributing to the trend. For all of these reasons, we paused the one class per year expansion to dig into the data and to develop a more defined long-term strategy with clear goals, timelines, and a plan that would ensure our expansion is responsive to what our families actually need in order to take advantage of this vital opportunity for their children. As we've discussed in previous board workshop and throughout each Curriculum Committee workshop, we partnered with Starting Strong on a year-long process that helped us really understand the need in our community in terms of the number of seats, where the seats are needed, and the barriers families face when trying to take advantage of this opportunity. We now have a clear five-year goal, which is to create 140 additional seats with a target demographic mix that is representative of the district overall. We know where these seats should be targeted throughout our community, and we know how our facility's capacity does and does not match up with the need. We understand the primary barriers our families face, such as the need for extended day, transportation, wraparound services, and flexible enrollment. And we are clear about needing to solve for those issues if this is to be a program that is accessible to all. We better understand the capacity needed to support a program of this scale, and we understand the costs associated with expansion efforts. We now need to decide on how we're going to achieve our goal. There are different ways to achieve this goal, and we researched what other communities in Maine and across the country have done to build public pre-K programs that aspire to universal access. As we have learned here in our own process, there are many competing demands and tensions at play that are not unique to us, or really about a misalignment around what we all want for our community, students, and educators. I've had the privilege of learning a lot from our own pre-K teachers, early education experts within our community, and from the external consultants who supported this process. What I've observed is that everyone has the same goal and the same hopes for this program. We want high-quality programs. We want to solve for the barriers our families face. And we believe in the importance of compensation parity for community-based childhood, early childhood teachers and pre-K through 12 public school teachers. In partnership with Starting Strong, we set out to bring forth different pathways that would help us realize our ultimate goal, with an awareness that each pathway has strengths and weaknesses. We felt it was our responsibility to educate you about a set of viable strategies and to tease out the implications, pros and cons, of the pathways so that you can make an informed decision that is grounded in an awareness of the tensions at play when any community strives to create universal pre-K programming. As a district, we want to meet our expansion goal, and we need clarity about how we collectively intend to get there so that we can start taking action on our plans. We're excited to be at the point where we're reviewing a concrete recommendation for how to proceed, as we know that gets us a step closer to moving this work forward and to better serving the needs of our community. So I am going to invite Matt Dubele from the Starting Strong team and Connect Ed to really briefly step you through the highlights from the research. This is, again, information that you've seen before, but I know you don't look at it every day like we do, so just to kind of resituate yourself in context. And then I'll talk through some more details related to the specific recommendation of Pathway Two.
Thank you. So, as many of you know, the study that we commissioned together, Starting Strong and the school district with the Data Innovation Project at USM, gave us a lot of really actionable data. The first of which is an understanding of the preschool experience of four-year-olds in the community. So this was looking at one cohort, essentially the students who are now in first grade, and digging into where they did or didn't go to preschool. And the big finding here is that about three-quarters of all students had some sort of preschool experience. But as you can see in this slide, it varies depending on their socioeconomic status, in some cases, their language status. And we knew that of that quarter of all four-year-olds who did not attend any preschool at all, they were disproportionately economically disadvantaged and disproportionately English-language learners. So we knew there was not only a gap in experience there, there was an equity gap to address. And so, over the months that followed, there was a stakeholder process that many of you participated in and many folks in the community participated in that set out to act on this data. And a really key finding from the Data Innovation Project study looked at the barriers that were keeping families from accessing preschool. And as many of you know, those barriers are interconnected. They involve scheduling and work conflicts. They involve finances, the high cost of private care, care of other siblings, and finally, the location of programs and the need for transportation when you have children, for example, going to school in multiple locations and needing to be picked up or dropped off at different times of day. And we found that in order to address the gap in access, we were going to need to focus on those barriers. So over the months to come, the district, in collaboration with Starting Strong, engaged an outside consultant, School Readiness Consulting, to help us run a process where we engaged over 22 stakeholder groups to really weigh in on the most important strategies to help us as a community address those barriers in order to make pre-K accessible for all four-year-olds in Portland. And together, we ended up with a set of 12 strategies, which I'll just quickly highlight a set of these five, which you have seen before, really focused on building a comprehensive system as a community that includes both the public school classrooms as well as private providers. There's a set of strategies that focused on how to do family-centered programming. So this is programming that responds to those barriers that families were telling us they were experiencing. And then finally, two strategies related to quality, because we know that it's not just any preschool experience that can be a game changer for four-year-olds, especially disadvantaged four-year-olds. It's a high-quality experience, like the kind that students who are in the current public pre-K classrooms are able to enjoy. So we knew that we needed to expand seats, because one of the things we found was not the capacity for every four-year-old to attend preschool. And so we focused in on the number of 140 new seats. And the way we reached that is if you take a look at the number of economically disadvantaged four-year-olds that we found were not accessing pre-K, and then you imagine wanting to serve those students in classrooms that reflected the overall demographic mix of the district. So about 55% of the seats for free and reduced lunch eligible students, 45% non-free and reduced eligible. That means you've got to create about 140 new seats. That's about nine new classrooms. So that's been the target that we've been talking about. And I'll turn it over to Malia.
Okay. Thank you so much. So then, like I mentioned, we're trying to figure out, okay, how do we get there? What's the strategy? And so we reviewed a few pathways, and in order to evaluate them, we considered how they respond to the barriers that families face that were surfaced through the data project, the degree to which they aligned to the 12 key strategies, which overlaps to some degree with that responsiveness to barriers. And then we looked at the budget and the financial considerations. So the first pathway, which I will not provide detail on, but is in the appendix if you're interested, is to expand through all PPS classrooms. So that would be to open nine new Portland Public Schools classrooms within the school system run by the school district. The second pathway is the current model. So that would be to expand through a combination of community partner-run classrooms and PPS-run classrooms. We would maintain the existing classrooms as they are right now, the mix of five PPS and three partner classrooms. And then that combination would be, I think, a five PPS classroom for community partner classroom model, in terms of the additional rooms. And then the third pathway we looked at was a Head Start partnership, where the Opportunity Alliance would oversee the program entirely. So they would run all of the classrooms, run any partnerships with community partners, and staff the programs, and the district would not play a role in coordinating the public pre-K. So then we did a comparative analysis, and in the workshops many of you attended, you know, we went into the details of each, the pros and cons of each. On the final workshop, we looked kind of summatively at the three options and how they did in relationship to the framework that I shared before. So first, we looked at quality, and the conclusion we had there is that they all reach or meet the quality standards that we're looking at. They all have to meet those standards in order to run the programs that they run and have things like comprehensive early learning and development standards, professional development, certified teachers, so on and so forth. So across the board, the three pathways met the quality standards that we're looking at. Tara, is there anything you would add to that? Or does that sound... Okay. Then we looked at how each pathway responded to the specific barriers that were most prominently named when we talked to families around the community. So the extent to which they have wraparound services, a longer day that's more in line with parents' work schedules, transportation, and responsive enrollment. And basically, you can see across the board, they're pretty similar, with the main difference being the degree to which the programs have built-in wraparound services. The Head Start Opportunity Alliance program had more infrastructure and capacity for that kind of wraparound service for families. And so that one is green, whereas the others are yellow, because there's some wraparound services built into the models, like before and after care, but not the same extent of services for the families. And then finally, we just compared some of the logistics across these. So in terms of governance, in Pathways One and Two, the Board of Public Education would oversee the program. And, you know, they're all in PPS classrooms or schools, excuse me, in Pathway One, a mix of our schools and community programs in Pathway Two, and then same thing in Pathway Three. Even though it would be governed by the Opportunity Alliance, the classrooms themselves were intended still to be housed in our buildings and in community programs. Coordination and staffing, you can see how that compares. I think the big difference being down in Pathway Three, where all of the teachers and ed techs are Opportunity Alliance teachers and ed techs, and there's some additional coaching and coordinating supports built into that pathway and that option with their model and some of the Head Start dollars that they'd be able to use. And then the rate of expansion, I mean, this is something that we can talk about as kind of open for discussion, but in the models that we built up and the financial models that you guys have received, Pathway One and Pathway Two make the same assumptions, which is that we'd get to five classrooms, or excuse me, the nine classrooms over five years, with two in the first year and then one more per year. And I think we had in Pathway Three, we were not going to do a classroom this next year, but then it was going to be two per year after that, I think, is what was intended. And then here are the cost comparisons, and there's information you have with more detail. But at a high level, this is how they compare. So with the assumption, like I mentioned, about year-one expansion and then kind of scaling up to the full nine classrooms by year five, here's how that plays out. When we looked at this financial information during workshop, a few things to call out, and then Alicia's here to answer other specific questions. But this includes coordination. This does include ELL teachers and parent community specialist capacity. That was a question folks had. And it includes before and after care as well. Anything else you want to say about that, Alicia? And so then we looked at the advantages and disadvantages, and really, the Starting Strong team helped take kind of an objective lens to this. Do you want to speak to this, Matt? I think, because they helped us kind of, as a partner, look globally at all of this together.
So just to give you a sense kind of where these came from, so partly, this is informed by other example communities that were suggested to us by the consultants that we had worked with. So we were partly looking at the experience of other communities, what had come up as strengths or what had emerged as challenges in various models they approached. We also did a survey with folks who are currently involved in the pre-K classrooms. So this is both the pre-K teachers, principals at the public schools that have pre-Ks, the Early Childhood Center directors, and Early Childhood Center staff who are involved with public pre-K. And so based on that feedback, as well as there were also some focus group-type meetings with some of those groups as well, we tried to distill down what we were hearing as key advantages and key disadvantages of each of the pathways.
And so ultimately, during the fourth workshop, the committee voted to recommend Pathway Two. And so that pathway is the current model that we have, which is to expand through a mix of PPS classrooms and community partner classrooms. So I just want to step you through a little bit more detail on that pathway, and then we can take questions. So this is, and we did this level of detail on Pathways One and Three, and again, that's in your appendix if you're interested in looking at that. So in terms of the who, like I mentioned, this would be governed by the Portland Board of Public Education. It would be staffed with a mix of teachers and ed techs. Well, first, we'd keep existing staff that we have in terms of the classrooms that we have right now, the A-classrooms that we have. And then we would expand with a mix of PPS teachers and community partner teachers and ed techs. It assumes the hiring of a 1.0 coordinator and a .5 admin support, and then it also assumes the parent community specialist capacity as well as ELL teachers. We assumed in the model one and a half in year one and three by year five, but of course, that would be, you know, dependent on our actual students, and so that might vary depending on who's in the program and their needs. As far as partners, the assumption here is that we'd retain the existing community partners and explore other potential community partners through expansion. And we, right now, are partnering with CDS for special education support. We all know that that's evolving and may change through the state. Where? We would open five classrooms within our elementary schools, and then we would locate four classrooms at community provider locations. And so when we were looking at the data more closely, we realized that based on the facilities' enrollment study, we really only have room for five more pre-K classrooms in the elementary schools as configured right now. And so this model of both PPS classrooms and community partner classrooms helps respond to that issue by, you know, using the five classrooms we have and then finding four spaces within community partners to achieve the full nine classrooms. I think we just talked a little bit, and you guys have seen, I think, some of this before. You do know, though, in case you've forgotten, that when we're opening pre-K classrooms, they do have specific requirements in terms of size, bathroom, those kinds of things. So we need to consider that, and so it can't be any classroom where it's located in the building, all this kind of stuff. And then in terms of transportation, we would try to place these classrooms throughout the community where we know we have the biggest need based on the data we collected. But this model does not solve for the transportation in terms of any type of busing. It only solves for transportation in so much as there are more classrooms which would have more potential proximity to families and their needs. This would be a full-day program, and this does assume that we provide before and after care, either through the partner sites and/or through our own PPS ed techs. And when we get to the questions and answers, we've done some exploration of partnership with REC, but in the model, as we discussed, we would have the before and after care through ed techs. And we noted community providers are eligible to accept the Child Care Subsidy Program vouchers to help cover that cost. The proposed rate of expansion here is that, like I mentioned, nine classrooms over five years, two per year, and one in the last year. In terms of coordination, we would coordinate at the district level, so we would hire a full-time pre-K coordinator and sort of in the out years, some administrative support. And this person would do data collection, enrollment, partner, you know, work with the partners, integrate special education, integrate ELL, do the curriculum and development, professional development, you know, oversee all of those elements of the program. And we did note, when we were talking about this pathway, that it does, this particular pathway, does require a lot of coordination because of the mix of classrooms and who's running them, so we just wanted to make that explicit here. We talked about in each of the pathways, the impact on the viability of the existing birth age for early childhood system. And there was consideration about, you know, the impact of public pre-K and how that affects early childhood providers. And so the note here is that by continuing to partner with community providers, it somewhat responds to some of the concerns there, where, you know, if they were all public classrooms, we would potentially, in theory, take all of the four-year-olds out of those programs, and then that makes it hard for them to run their birth-through-three programming for the families in the community. And then in terms of quality, like I said, when we did an analysis across the board, this was consistent in all three pathways. So we'd continue to adhere to the main early learning and development standards and all of the accreditation standards. All the teachers need the 081 certification, things like that. So that would be true in this model, as it really would be in any of them. As far as wraparound services, this does not provide services in the summer, so it would follow our regular school year. And we would want to work out the details, but I think the assumption is that it would be the regular school day with that before and after time available for families, and so things like our regular holidays and vacations would apply. As far as the wraparound service, we really are looking at, in this model, your basic special education services through CDS, the ELL services, and then accessing the other types of family engagement opportunities we have in the K through 12 schools. The cost here, do you want to talk to this, Alicia?
So the net cost for this pathway is the same for One and Two. The idea would be that for the first two years, we would add only PPS classrooms, and then the third year is when we'd start. The difference, where I think the fifth classroom would be PPS, and then so on and so forth would be partnership classrooms. So the first two years, you'll notice, are the same for One and Two. All of these pathways are, A, they show a net cost, so it's the total cost less any anticipated revenue we think we would see coming from the state of Maine. That does not anticipate any change in the funding levels for pre-K. I know that's something that's potentially ahead of the legislature right now, so that is not taken into consideration. This is current state. Another thing to note is this does include before and after priced out as if every student was coming before and after, and as if we were paying for it exclusively. So it's sort of the maximum exposure out of cost. As you may have looked in the background materials, we created sort of a matrix that could show you sort of if this many people were coming and if this many people paid sort of what our exposure would be. So this includes our maximum cost exposure at these levels. It does, as Malia mentioned, include the coordination for the pre-K in sort of the academic group. It includes our ELL teachers added in. It does include staffing for before and after. It does not include administration for before and after. So that's one thing that we did note, is if we did this on our own, likely, there could be additional coordination staff that would have to be added. So that would be sort of on top of. I think that's all I can think of right now.
Okay. Thank you. And so I think, you know, like, when we looked at each pathway, we went a little bit deeper into some of the advantages and disadvantages, which Matt kind of highlighted kind of broadly when looking across the pathways. But here, you see some of the things that were named as advantages. It addresses some of the space issues that we would have. We have community providers that are set up to accept families and access the Child Care Subsidy Program. We achieve wage parity with the PPS teachers, and it could help with the transportation barrier. But again, I mentioned before, there are some limits there as well. Some of the disadvantages, like I had mentioned, complex coordination, the transitions for the students that are at the community site. So it's really great when you're going pre-K to K in your school, so we're just mindful of that would not be the experience for all the students that are in the public program. The community partner teachers... The community partner teachers don't have wage parity, or the representation that the PPS teachers have in this version of the model. It's school-year-only programming, which we call a disadvantage because of that not responding to some of the family barriers that were named, the added costs of the administration in our budget, transportation issues, like we mentioned. And we don't have complete certainty about the providers in the community and who's eligible over time. We did do an analysis of how many providers are there, how many are Level 4 and qualify right now, so we certainly have preliminary data to make us feel confident we could do this, but it's not certain. So, I think at this point, unless Mr. Bautano or Superintendent Botana, you want to say anything else, we wanted to open it up for questions. Let me actually just quickly say before that, so this is an FAQ, and we've been adding to it. And so, you all got in your pre-read, an almost-complete version, so Member Figdora had sent in several questions that we responded to. The thing that's been updated in the version you have right now in your hands is a little bit more information about how community providers responded to the PEA proposal, which is basically Pathway 2, but having all of the teachers, both the PPS, but also the community provider teachers, under the PEA contract. And so, in here, there is some work that the Starting Strong team did to reach out to the providers to understand how they would react to that type of proposal. And Matt, let me just find where that is. Can you help me, Matt, because I know you?
It's the very last paragraph.
Yeah. It's repeated twice, but the easiest way to find it is on your last page, and that's the last paragraph. Would it be helpful for me to reread that, so everybody here is?
I don't know if you are prepared or willing to talk or explain the, what was proposed from the PEA. I didn't expect you to do that, but just so that we can then make better sense of what that explanation actually is.
Yeah. I mean, we have the sort of script from the president here, as well as the consolidated response from providers, so just let me know if you want to talk more about it, or I'm open to whatever.
So, we can maybe roll right into questions, and then as that comes up, we can address it. So, if we have any board questions, Ms. Davis?
In the information comparing compensation, is it possible to really get an apples-to-apples compensation? And I noted that there was nothing noted for retirement, either on the PPS teachers who are able to participate in the main state retirement system, which is considered a good system, and especially for a career teacher. It's a defined benefit pension program as opposed to Social Security. And so, there's no mention that that's a benefit that the PPS teachers would get, and there's no mention at all of retirement benefits for the other two providers. Gave us the current range, but doesn't also say what the typical starting range is, so that a new teacher who would be taking, we're talking about expansion, so this might well be a new teacher who would come in at each of those places, and might or might not, you know, what I don't know here is, am I looking at community partner teachers saying current range is 36? Well, is that your start? Because that's below our starting salary for a Portland teacher, and it's well below, at this point, what's being proposed at the legislature for starting teachers, which will even pull ours up more. So, that and comparison on tuition reimbursement, the actual cost of, it says for PPS teachers that we pay 100% of health insurance, dental, you know, a number of the benefits. It says what we pay, and it just says in the others that they pay a certain part, knowing that that can be quite a bit. That could be $150 a month, or whatever. So, I'd like, in order to really see what the difference in compensation is, this needs a lot more detail from our community providers. Eligibility for-
Can I make a, just to clarify, just so I understand, because, and I think there are community providers here, and Starting Strong, we've asked for this, and I think continue to want ourselves more detail. So, we, for the PPS teachers, I mean, we, there's a lot of detail in terms of what they get in our contract, and so, we, with the Director of HR, Barb, pulled out some key features, and one of the things that we wanted to articulate here is the range of our bands, like you mentioned, the starting and how high they go. But I think if you wanted the detail, ultimately, it's the contract. So, I guess what I would just, so I feel like we can provide that, you guys have that, and then, we will ask the providers for as much as they have. I don't think they're, it seems maybe like, I don't know, that our contract's like, there, you can find it, it's online. I understand your question, we've been trying to get that information, but maybe what we'll do is just get whatever we can, deliver it to you, like their contract, or whatever it is, what they're willing to put out there. Would that suffice?
That would help. I mean, part of the issue that's very much before this board is whether or not we're going to offer educational services and compensate our educational staff differently.
Right, right.
And that's a very critical decision for me, and so, I need to be able to, the same as a teacher who's looking at, which place am I going to work?
Right.
I want to get to that level of detail that would enable me, as a potential employee, to say, which is going to be the better place for me to work? Because I think that's important to us. And, you know, I'll be very clear that on this issue, if teachers are teaching on behalf of Portland Public Schools, it is my belief that they should be Portland Public Schools teachers, and have full access to the compensation, full benefits. I don't believe that the community is likely to be able to meet that. And it's a real value decision for me, but I'm, that's my assumption, so I'm asking the community providers to give me the kind of information so that I know that my sense of what the economic playing field is for early childhood teachers, having trained as one myself. This is an area where women have been underpaid for decades, and I do, as a board member, I don't see it as appropriate to vote to continue that. So, I need more information to make sure that I'm, have the information to make that Another question on the childcare subsidies, it talks about eligibility income guidelines, and my question was, is this based on gross income, adjusted gross income, taxable income? So, just more detail, because different poverty programs use different definitions of income, and this doesn't provide that definition for us.
So, that is not our, I mean, we would not be, these are coming from, I, yeah, so this is not something that we would be administering.
But that is something that we can get, we can get an answer to.
We can get the information.
We don't have one, but we can get-
I can't answer that question.
Yeah. No. This is just actually more information that would be helpful so that, because we don't actually have the full eligibility requirements. If somebody works in an income-eligible, administers an income-eligible program, it depends on what those are, whether you're looking at gross income, adjusted gross income, or taxable income, and all of those operate in the income-eligibility playing field. So, just wanting to know what we were talking about.
Okay.
I think that was, and then one other thing I would like to share, because it seems to be missing here, in the discussion of when we have, as a district, had public, Portland Public Schools teachers, teaching in private or community partner locations, is I guess, perhaps, right now, Title I has a teacher at Levi Day School. We had two teachers at Cathedral for many, many years. They went to Cathedral every morning, taught. They were our teachers, we evaluated them, we paid them, they were our teachers, paid with Title I funds, providing Title I services to private school students. So, the district has done this successfully before. It did not create any issues at Cathedral. I don't know if their teachers were paid differently. It wasn't an issue, because they were providing Portland Public Schools services and education. And I guess if we're going to expand pre-K and call it ours, it, to me, is no different than when we went into a private school and provide Title I services. So, we have done that in the past, it was for many years. So, it's, we have the model, I guess, and that wasn't mentioned here. But I know we did, because I helped to administer it and fund it.
Right.
So, I just wanted to add that in. I think that was, I think that was all of my questions. Yep.
Just wanted to clarify, the table that's in your packet with the ranges of salaries and comparisons of benefits, as I understand it, the range you're looking at for community partners includes all of what they consider teachers, which are both their lead teachers and what they call either assistant teachers or afternoon teachers, which are actually more comparable to the district's ed techs. And the district range does not include ed techs, so that's all just lead teachers. So, some of that lower range that you're seeing, those are not necessarily their lead teacher salaries. And we do have some community provider directors here, who I'm sure would be happy to share how they set salary for their lead teachers who are teaching within public preschool.
And I think we can just, if that's the case, provide you in documentation a very clear, all of the information we have as a next step, so.
Yep. And I think, just to underscore that, what I'm looking for is not what they're currently paying teachers, or they're paying, you know, that, because it was clear that because their programs have existed for much longer, that some of their teachers have more longevity. And so, my assumption is, they may have worked their way up in whatever pay scale system there is. But I think, as I say, I need a lot more information to be able to actually answer the question of what is the difference in compensation. And if I can't get that information, then my default position is to believe as, you know, that we've given, we've given better information.
Yeah.
So, theirs needs to come up to that standard, so that we can see it, and yes, pull out that, give us a pay, you know, if you've got a pay range into which people can go, we want to see apples-to-apples, so that we can actually answer this compensation question fairly, to both the community providers and to our own teachers, and make a data-informed decision.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, Ms. Davis, go ahead.
One other was, in the presentation, we talk about the fact that the cost of providing, in essence, the economics of the community providers, that the cost of providing care to four-year-olds subsidizes the cost of providing care to 0 to 3. I would like to have broken out, what is the amount, what is the actual cost to provide four-year-old pre-K services without the subsidy? Because I think otherwise, it would appear that what I'm voting for, should I go with this proposed pathway, would be not only to provide four-year-old pre-K, but to actually provide funds that are going to subsidize 0 to 3. And that's a different ask than I think what the board directed the superintendent and everyone else to go and do. What our intent is, is to expand four-year-old pre-K. So, what I need is the actual cost of four-year-old pre-K without subsidizing the 0 to 3. And it's been said several times that the cost of, that one of the reasons if this came out of those community partners is that they're depending on the payments they get for four-year-olds to subsidize the cost for 0 to 3. What would we pay if we were just doing four-year-old care without the subsidy? So, that was my other question.
Thank you.
So, we have a first read on this tonight. Is the intention that we're going to vote, this will be up for a vote at our next meeting?
March 5th is when we're going to have it up for a vote, yes.
And is that, like, a hard, fast deadline for a reason?
For inclusion in the budget.
Okay. The reason that I ask, I just sort of had a side conversation with the Chair of the Curriculum Committee, and I understand that we received the PEA proposal after the deliberations of the Curriculum Committee, so it wasn't really totally fleshed out at the committee level. And it seems to me that we need to identify, as a board, kind of where we are on that issue of parity in pay. And I'm not, I'm not 100% sure we can do that by next meeting. I wanted to echo Ms. Davis's wish for a cost comparison for the PEA proposal, if we could just see, you know, Pathway 1, 2, 3, and then PEA proposal, just a high level, what would that cost? Because it seems to me that, you know, we have sort of three constituency groups here, the district, the community partners, and the PEA, all, you know, agree that we want to advance universal pre-K, but we're setting ourselves up in kind of an adversarial position, and we need to know if we really have a problem. And it seems to me that that comes down to cost.
So, let me, I guess, first, ask a question. Why do you think that we're not able to address that issue between the question and answer today, any additional data that is necessary for you to answer that question? And it could very well be that the answer to the question is, I'm not willing to support this pathway, because it does not provide for equitable compensation for teachers in the private providers, and thus, you would, as a board, vote down the recommendation of the Curriculum Committee, and potentially say, we'd like to go with, you know, with number 1, or, you know, make an amendment to number 2, so the actual recommendation on the table, that would stipulate to what Ms. Olafson recommended, which was, all of those staff would be district employees, they would be managed as district employees in much the same way that Ms. Davis just described, the teachers that were previously at Cathedral. So, I guess, you know, for us, the imperative in this process has always been to have something that we can decide we're going to put in the budget, which you're going, you're going to see my budget on the 19th. And so, you know, prior to that time, if this is not decided, then we can't really put that into this year's budget, which, you know, delays expansion for another, for another year.
I mean, I definitely think we need to put it in the budget with, I mean, we have, I think we could put in the budget of a place marker for what we think realistically it's going to cost us next year, it's a one-year budget. So, I mean, maybe we can do it, maybe we can do it in the next, by the next meeting, if we can, you know, get the data together quickly, and we can have enough time for deliberation. I'm just concerned that the proposal is kind of new to the whole body, and we haven't had a deliberation on it yet. And I would, I would, you know, just hate for the board to have to not fully flesh that out before being able to make the decision. I mean, if it, you know, we just, we don't have any idea right now whether, you know, compensating our teachers fully would cost something close to what we have on the table, or if it's, you know, sort of-
I think, yeah, I think we do, we actually do know that, so.
Yeah, and I, just to point out one thing here, so I brought you back to the comparative analysis. So, the PEA proposal is to go with Pathway 2, but the difference is that the teachers and the community provider programs would be represented by the PEA, meaning they have representation, but also our full compensation and benefits package. And so, I just, as a consideration, it's not really, to me, it's a 2B, it's not a Pathway 4. And from a planning perspective, you see here, the costs are basically the same, and I just confirmed with Alicia that the assumptions baked into the financial modeling are the same. So, in terms of the compensation, I think the impact that we can look at more closely is perhaps, in the out-years-
is perhaps, in the out years, if people stayed on our contract, I think our scale goes higher in our benefits. So I think we would do some modeling for you guys to help you better understand that. But in terms of the short term, the assumptions are comparable.
Okay.
So I just, I don't, I, I, yeah, I think I'd think of it as a, a new version of two, not a completely different path. So for budgeting and planning purposes, I feel like we could get direction on that and then sort that out, just, just.
Or a new version of one, because in essence, we're talking about there being all of our staff but located in different facilities, because the, the primary reason for, for that second option, I believe, or at least one of the primary reasons, is the fact that we don't currently have the space in our facilities to be able to expand at that level. And so that is a way to, sort of to, to leverage existing, existing places where kids go to get, you know, pre-K services, and their siblings might go for birth-to-three services, you know, closer to their homes and things along those lines. So that would be the, that's, in essence, what we're talking about under Mrs. Olafson's recommendation, would be a variation on, you know, on either one or two, and the, the financial difference is not significant, and, you know, it's particularly not significant in the first couple of years.
In the short term, yeah.
Good. So we'll go Ms. Moriarty, Ms. Fegtor, and then Mr. Atkinson.
First of all, thank you again to Malia and her staff. Alicia, thank you very much for this, and being on the curriculum committee, and Ms. Mark, and me, and Mickey, I asked those exact same questions around, can we see apples to apples? And so we did talk about that and request that even, but we wanted to get this out of our committee to the full board. So I'm glad that you raised that again, because that's a critical piece of it, even though we moved it out of committee, still would like to see that, and I appreciate your willingness to dig deeper for us. But I tend to agree, what the superintendent's saying is, I'm just excited to get this moving forward, because hitting a pause button and waiting two years, that's the part that I've been anxious to get something moving. So when we look at all of the, inevitably, it's very, very difficult, as we all know as board members, to make it perfect in every, checking off every box all the time. But I just really want to emphasize the idea of getting this somehow in our budget, getting it out the first, the first year, and making sure that there's a priority to continue to refine it and ensuring that our teachers that are working for students are, is equitable, and we are focusing on that, and somehow putting it in documentation, or that the charge would now be to, to make that, if we decide that that's what we all would want. But I just wanted to add that piece, because we did discuss it in the curriculum committee as well. Thank you.
Fegtor?
Thank you. I first wanted to thank PEA for bringing us this alternative pathway forward. I think it addresses a really fundamental flaw with pathway two as it stands, with having this disparity that is, I think, really problematic for those partner classrooms, because, because of the disparity, but also because of what it can mean for retaining teachers and for ensuring quality, even when those partner classrooms are meeting other quality benchmarks. If you're having high turnover in teachers, it's really hard to actually maintain a quality classroom. And communities all across the country are, that have partner classrooms and classrooms in public schools are facing this challenge. And the way they're going is to, in fact, have pay equity. I haven't seen other communities be as creative as what PEA has brought to us in having the employees work, the teachers work for the schools. And so I just, I really appreciate that. And I also want to, to say that I've been in touch directly with at least one partner provider who was really open to this, and I appreciated that openness and tried of, trying to thread this needle and do what's going to be best for our students. And so I, I, this has been an iterative process, and I just, I think, on all sides, it's been, I appreciate people coming to the table and offering creative solutions, and I strongly support the PEA proposal. I do have other issues that I want to raise, and the first one is just about what the cost, since the current pathway two includes full before and after care and assumes that the school would pay for that before and after care, rather than, as with REC, paying on, families paying on a sliding scale, what they're able. It would be really helpful just to have, and I appreciate this chart, which talks about different, different, different levels of, of participating, participation in the before and after care and associated costs. I'm wondering, do we know for kindergarteners, the percent of kindergarteners that participate in before and after care? Because that might be, that might give us insight into where on this chart could we expect?
We do. So about 20%, I believe, was the participation rate for kindergarteners, is about 100 out of 500. So you can see on the far right side, you can go to 20%. And then the approximate number of waivers are about 30%. So on there, it would be sort of 20% participation, 70% paid. And you can see sort of where that lands. Which I believe would be no cost to the district, because all costs would be covered by fees, as it stands right now.
And then, so can you do some quick math for us and translate?
Can you just, do you have those slides?
That chart is in our, is in our package.
Can I have them?
But I'm saying, so if you, if there's no cost to this program, and it's a little bit hard, I'm looking at some of the charts from the workshops, it's a little hard to disaggregate the before and after care costs. So if we, you know, if we look at the full cost of implement, at, at full implementation, you have a $3 million figure, if we're more realistic about the cost of before and after care, what would that figure be?
So I think, you know, again, we did, based on your question, we did research that with REC, and so we have the, their current estimates for kindergarten students we used. We asked for and received kindergarten students, what percentage of kids do actually use it? So, you know, it's 100 out of a total of 500 kids in the district, so that's what we, that's what we used. And we asked them what their waiver process looks like, so who pays full cost versus sliding scale, and we have that, and that's what Alicia just referred to. Under, if we were to have those same assumptions play out, again, we, we're just using that as a model, we don't know that that actually plays out, but under that model, it would cost us nothing to provide the before and after care. But again, we don't know that that's realistic, because we've never run it.
Yeah, and I understand that, and it's incredibly helpful, but I'm saying, if you then subtract out the cost that we had assumed for before and after care, what is, what's the net cost?
And that's what.
Because then it just, right now, I don't have a good cost of that full implementation. What does this program that's before us, what would it, what's our estimated cost?
So the total expense cost without the before and after would be about 1.35 million. In year one, minus, minus the revenue, so the net cost, we'd be at about 1.2 million, a little under 1.2 million.
Could you do full implementation?
So, full cost of before and after, all in year five, is about $450,000. So that would be 2.8 million would be the total cost. And when we add the subsidy revenue back in, it's about 2.6 million.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else want to talk about this spreadsheet before I close this?
I have other questions, but I could come, you can come back to me.
Mr. Atkinson?
Yeah, sorry, I just had a, just wanted to understand, make sure that I understood. The, the first year of expansion is envisioned to be BPS classrooms, correct? So I guess just going into the budget conversation, if we know that we're going for BPS classrooms, it's sort of, it doesn't really matter whether we go for option one or option two at this point to, to make the budget decision. So it, it, it seems like we're maybe walking away from that idea of delaying a decision. But I just thought, you know, there may not be such a pressing need to have that done before the budget discussion happens, if, if we're pretty clear that, you know, either option one or two is, is where we want to go next.
I would, yeah, I would say option one, two, or whether you call it 1B or 2B of the PEA, all three of those would be the same next year, assuming we do the two classrooms.
Exactly. Thank you. Any other questions? So I just wanted to, because I'm glad that, Ms. Nally, that you pointed that out, that that is assuming that we do the two classrooms, which is something that the board could always discuss and decide to go with either less or more than two classrooms. So again, we're looking at what includes two classrooms in the first year. Ms. Fegtor?
So, and then one thing we haven't, that wasn't specified in pathway two, coming out of the curriculum committee, was transportation. And I do believe that during the committee process, and I'm happy if Mr. Balthans wants to talk about this, but there was quite a bit of interest in providing transportation. I know our options are limited at this point, and perhaps we'll have a better solution in the future, but at this point, probably the best option is to provide families that are interested metro vouchers. So I just want to put that on the table for, for consideration as we move towards considering the full scope of the program that we might consider and vote on next week. In addition, for me, when I look at this program overall, and I'm really appreciative of all the work that has gone on over the past year to do this analysis, to enable us to get to this point in the conversation, I have a fundamental challenge of, I'm, I don't see how this plan to add nine classrooms, which would enable us to serve about half of all four-year-olds in the city, I don't see how that aligns with our Portland Promise goals, where reducing our opportunity and achievement gaps is kind of fundamental and such a high priority, and, and in, in a way that I'm incredibly enthusiastic about, has been such an organizing principle for, for the district. High-quality, universal pre-K is, is a real, can be a real game changer for kids and families and communities, and has just an incredible potential to reduce the opportunity gap, I'm sorry, to the achievement gap. Looking at data from, from NEAR, from the National Institute of Early Education, early, thank you. I think they found, and let me grab, I know I circulated it to the board, but just in terms of the potential, I think it's worth looking at, they looked at research, looking at, you know, the, the universal pre-K has been now a strategy that so many communities have adopted, and there's great longitudinal, longitudinal data. And the analysis that they did found that high-quality, universal pre-K reduced the achievement gap at kindergarten by as much as 45% in math for black students and 78% for Hispanic students, while essentially closing the entire gap in reading for both groups. The achievement, the, the results weren't as significant for, for kids living in poverty versus kids who are higher income, but still very significant. So the achievement gaps between low-income and higher-income children narrowed by 27% in math and 41% in reading. So when you think of just the potential of university, high-quality, universal pre-K to help us achieve this, you know, core organizing principle of, of the district now articulated in the Portland Promise, and yet, we, you know, it's, 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 and something that the district has struggled with for years and, and not made, you know, I realize we're taking a lot of strides now and, and really kind of baking, reducing the achievement gap into everything we're doing. But this, this solution is so powerful, and yet, we're only proposing to, to be able to serve half of the four-year-olds in the district. So for me, that there's just a misalignment. I think that we're ramping up this, we're ramping up the program too slowly, and we're not scaling it to reach all of the kids that are needed. So I would like the board to consider a faster, a more aggressive ramp up, and ultimately reaching more children, so we can at least approach universal.
Can I respond with just a couple clarifications? So one, at least from my perspective, this is not, I think the resolution was more sort of broad in its intentions, but this is a, helping us operationalize a timeline and a target. So, you know, you might be proposing a more aggressive timeline, a more aggressive target, but I didn't see it as the ultimate end goal, it was just like, you know, so we can plan backward from that. Also, and Matt, maybe you can help me here, but just to make sure, just that my understanding is that the 140 seats does actually include all of the economically disadvantaged students who are not getting pre-K. So I just, I'm not pushing back against your desire to go more aggressive, I would love to, I'm just saying, this target does actually meet the needs of the economically disadvantaged families from the equity perspective that you're raising. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. So the additional seats beyond that would go, I think, to expand so its access to all people in the community, and so I think those would go toward non-economically disadvantaged families, a more aggressive target.
Yeah, and what I've seen in, in some of the research, or in the research, is that, the research suggests that universal programs are more successful at reaching at-risk kids, because, as I understand it, those programs then become the community norm. Pre-K is universal, every, you know, families.
Right.
Send their children to pre-K, and so they're act, so, so again, they're more successful at reaching those, those at-risk kids than targeted programs. And I know we've had challenges, and we're addressing them in, in part by expanding our day and, and having before and after care and ideally, transportation. But we've had a real challenge with kids living in poverty being a part of our program. And so I think we could continue to expect, to experience that in some regard until we make it the, the norm, as would be the case in a universal pre-K program.
Yeah, I mean, I would be thrilled.
Ms. Davis?
I also appreciate all the work that's been, been done on this, and I'm glad to see it, and I'm glad we're having the conversation. I think that one of the, the issues that we've experienced as we've begun to build this is that, that we're currently in an environment where it is not viewed as, as universal either in terms of, of families choosing to access it, nor have we and nor are we considering building a system which actually meets two, you know, deals with two of the larger barriers, transportation and actually year-round care, so that someone can work without having to move, you know, have the same problems that our kindergarten, first grade, elementary school, that you, parents deal with pretty much through middle school, what are we going to do during the summer? deal with pretty much through middle school. What are we going to do during the summer? If I'm going to continue to work as a parent, you know, I've got to find alternative places for my child. And the reality is there isn't a lot of, you know, sort of summer camps for very young children, for four-year-olds. And so we're building a system which is actually not going to be something that all parents will be able or choose to participate in currently. And we're in a situation where it is not mandated for parents to. So I, I think until we deal with those barriers, that we probably won't be able to actually penetrate the market as fully as we would like to and equally across all demographics in terms of, of young people. So I think sort of long-term, we need to think about that because, you know, when we expect children to come to kindergarten, we provide a bus and we're there and there is summer programming that has been developed in the community. This is not to say that as this gets built out, that those kinds of things may not come along, but I think it, it's something that we're going to face and until those other pieces are in place so that a parent can, you know, sign their child up and have that child have a, a place and year-round with transportation, with high-quality care, that we're going to still see limited participation in some parts of our community. And we may not get the penetration in the, particularly in the places we want to see it. I thought it was very interesting in this first chart where you look at Longfellow, which is our most privileged school and has been for many, many decades. It has the lowest free and reduced lunch and there were five students who didn't attend a preschool. It was the lowest by far of any other school and that you saw the highest numbers of students who weren't in a pre-K, who did not attend preschool in our low-poverty schools. So, you know, I'm glad that, we need to get started, but I think we're going to continue to have some bumps until we wrestle with what does it actually take to make it doable, you know, actually accessible for all of our, our community families so that they can actually access the care. So that to me is going to be year-round care and transportation.
Okay.
But let's get started.
I'm ready.
Love the motivation. Any other questions?
So I did have more of a process question just for clarification for the board and the public on what the next steps are. So like we mentioned earlier, next week on March 5th is when we'll have a motion on the floor and we'll be able to further discuss, get public comment, then eventually vote. But I wanted the superintendent maybe to give us a bit more clarity about how it will be implemented into the budget depending on the decision that the board takes and sort of kind of more, I guess, clarity on, on the subsequent steps.
Well, I mean, I think there isn't a lot that you don't already know that we've, we've, in conversations with the finance committee, have factored this in as one of the priorities that, that I would be bringing forward in the budget. So assuming that you vote on it, then it would be incorporated into the, the budget that I present on, on March 19th.
Ms. Figtor?
Actually, I have one more thing. I wonder if someone can talk about the, I don't know if it's folks from Starting Strong or you have the area to talk about the, the committee that's coming together after we make our recommendation around local funding and having an additional local funding stream to help make pre-K expansion more possible.
So Matt, I'll let you as the person who's, who's pulling that together, but-
Yeah, so as many of you know, communities that have done this have typically not relied solely on property taxes. They've taken advantage of a variety of funding streams to do this kind of ambitious pre-K push. And so our expectation and the, I think the voices of many stakeholders have been that it's going to be important to do that. And so that's why the sort of parallel process that Starting Strong has been sort of getting ready to launch is a stakeholder group that will focus on the financing side. And we know that, you know, the school board has identified Board Member Figtor as a representative on that group. We'll also have the superintendent with us and a variety of other stakeholders. And so the anticipated timing is that once a decision is made about the pathway, so we have a kind of, at least the ballpark cost, that then that group will launch. So presumably, you know, sometime after March 5th, if the decision is made on March 5th. And then that group will essentially convene over a series of a couple sessions with one express deliverable, which is to make a recommendation for how the community as a whole approaches funding. So that's thinking about the mix of different sources that might be feasible beyond just thinking about the amount that goes through local funding in the school budget.
Can I just, a couple of things that I want to add to that. If you, and I don't expect you to recall this, but we did in the earlier workshops about, as we were talking about the pathways, shared a slide that showed how 20 different cities approached this. And, you know, I think that that was the driving force for Starting Strong pulling together this, you know, cross-sector led by Mike Bork, who many of you know as, is a parent in the district and is also the CEO of MEMIC. He is co-chairing that along with me. And, you know, again, the idea is that this does not necessarily have to be the way that we fund year two, year three, year four and year five of the expansion, that there are other ways in which that can be accomplished and that that's the purpose of that committee or task force or whatever it is that we are. That group will be coming together to look at those other options, other ways in which cities have been able to fund their early childhood expansion. And honestly, more broadly than just how do we pay for four-year-old programming, because I think one of the things that, that Board Member Figtor did not mention today, but I know has been in some of her previous comments and questions is, you know, what about three-year-olds and what about, you know, the concerns about the access, the birth-to-three care for families? That entire milieu of early care is every bit as important as the four-year-old programming that we're talking about today. And so that commission is actually looking more broadly at how do we support all of that birth-to-five continuum.
And I do think that that process, which I think is terrific and, and I think when you look around the country at what other communities are doing, most that are working right now to either improve and expand their preschool programs do, are moving towards having a local dedicated source of funding for stability and longevity of the program. I do think it, it, once we start that conversation, then, you know, the committee is going to be working off of what we're trying to accomplish in the pre-K program that we've defined. So if we just define these five years and reaching half of all four-year-olds, then that's going to be what the committee then looks to be able to fund. So I, I think it behooves us to take this opportunity after a year of work to lay the groundwork for us to, to really put together a more thoughtful approach or a more, you know, more informed approach on how to expand pre-K, to take this opportunity to think about, you know, where we want the program to go overall. And that's why I encourage us to, you know, there was an early commitment to universal pre-K. It's in the resolution again that the board passed in the fall. And I would really encourage us to think about how, you know, if, if we're talking about nine classrooms over five years, what then? Do we have a vision to actually achieve universal, universal pre-K for four-year-olds? And, you know, communities are moving towards that and some very, you know, very quickly because of the power of high-quality pre-K to really transform kids' lives, lives. And so I would encourage us to take that opportunity now.
So I think if we don't have any other questions, we can probably wrap it up and get our business meeting started.